Well, we have Russian.
Yeah.
We have the staff. Well, you can hear it, but they're not good. Well, I really just really just want to present a case that I'm not good about. Gotcha.
Check, check, check. Okay, Chairman Davis, would you like to go to the test into your microphone, please?
Test.
Commissioner Martin, do you want to give a test into your microphone, please?
Test.
Okay, Commissioner Pierce, would you like to say a test into your microphone, please? Test. Okay, thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'd just say that I'd like to apologize for the delay. We've had technical difficulties and we had some presentations tonight that we really wanted to hear from. Of course, technology is now allowing us to do so. Our full apology to Mr. Joe Produzo with the Mighty River LLC and Professor Gene Barnes and Jim Johnson, UNC. They were part of our presentation tonight. Unfortunately, like I said, technology is now allowing us to continue with those presentations tonight. So with that said, I want to move. I'll move on to item, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to just continue with item number one, which is Department End-Red Reports. These reports are going to be for just our information purposes only. Well, I'm sorry, brief chat, Social Services, Child Support, Mr. Ryan Woodson here in person. So, Mr. Woodson, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kenny. Commissioners from County Council, my partner Kenny Turner, thank you for having me here tonight. I've been back as a regular in the Department of Social Services since June 16th. Thank you for your support and the support of the County of Michael Porter. I greatly appreciate the county's support and the honor reserved at our nation's military. I cannot last or been treated any better by one of the social services and county government. I repeat there are changes and challenges brought on by coronavirus. The department had many vacancies that need to be filled to include two supervisory positions. The board of social services also had two members who were completing their terms. I hired two new supervisors as well as filled in five other positions. Three more positions are advertised, three additional positions will be advertised within the near future. The human resources department has been outstanding in their assistance to us and I appreciate their work. The department continues to have challenges with the coronavirus due to various school systems having a virtual or hybrid first quarter with children being taught at home. I have 10 staff members actually that's pretty still available now. 11 staff members who will be working at home one, three, or four days per week. Some are working hours, two days per week, some one day per week, one, two, five days per week, one, four days per week if I put up on the table. I expect this to end March 16th. If the school systems extend this to another quarter, I will have to re-vacuum. The department has enough compute to find a way to accommodate this. I'd also like to share with the board, I have two staff members that are recovering from the coronavirus. I have one out with the coronavirus right now and I have three more that are being tasked with the governor, will be being tasked with the bar and the next day if they're not showing any symptoms. Adult Medicaid has still a difficult responsibility in the county. I recently received the results of three separate audits of adult Medicaid. The first audit was an audit from fiscal year 19, conducted by landlord and was contracted to audit cases throughout the study. They audited one more county case and found no errors. The payback for that audit was zero. The second audit was the county of year 2019 recipient elderly determination audit. One county was one of the first in the third of the counties to be audited. We won't be auditing on this the next two years. Other counties will be audited over the next two years. The standard for approval actions is 96.8%. We surpassed that by 98% of our approval actions, no correction. The standard for denial of termination actions, actions, is 96.8% as well. We missed that one by 5.8% and it's scored 91%. The importance of accurate approvals has been stressed, I mean, and I feel that this helped to create some inactive denials and terminations. There was a 90% accuracy standard for cases regarding technical errors that do not change the outcome of elderly determinations. We had 76.5% of the cases with no technical errors, all eyes and forgotten with these requests. We missed that standard by 13.5%. There is a $1,379.92 payback resulting from this audit. That's almost 2% of cases that were inactive and approved. The last audit was the county single audit, which occurs annually. The audit identified two cases which were inactive and not terminated after changes in social security benefits occurred. Food and nutrition services workers were notified with changes, but the adult Medicaid unit was not. I feel this is a flaw in the NC fast system that only one worker can receive a task or the information about changes in the town. I hold it for evidence, it was a file of labor nutrition workers who were notified in standard Nevertheless, that department was notified and satisfied with its health response. I requested that NC fast be changed so the Medicaid workers are notified and granted about social security benefit changes. The state didn't allow us to re-vacuum those two cases. One of the cases successfully resulted in a client being eligible for a portion of the period in question and that settlement is approximately $34,000. The payback for that case is now $5,028. In the other case, the client remained ineligible. The payback for that one case is $25,608.39. The total payback of this audit is $30,636.39. The total payback to the state for all three audits is $32,016.31. We have a new supervisor in the adult Medicaid unit. She was one of the two hired shortly after my return. We have vacant IMC two position for which I recently received no applications for. We have that re-advertising. We will be filling a quality control position which was budgeted to begin January 1st. I expect to have some difference between filling that position with someone who has experience in adult Medicaid. But with the update, I had an adult Medicaid worker to resign this month. So we've got that position advertised as well. I believe it went up today. We have contracted with the base for outside expertise for training. We are planning for similar trainings this year as well. The fact we have that got one on today. The department contracted for outside expertise while the supervisory position is vacant for about six months and we plan on doing that again on new supervisors out on the turn to leave. The department continues to struggle with adult Medicaid as our median department is about to stay. We deeply regret those paybacks. In the past, they have mainly centered on long-term care cases and I include there were no paybacks associated with long-term care in the county single audit. Other units of the department are doing well. We had only one child in Cassidy. We recently took Cassidy at three actually last week. So we now have four children in Cassidy. We had four other children in Cassidy who were just recently placed with relatives on a long-term basis and our custody is in. I appreciate the board of commissioners' support through the department and the great relationships that we have with county administration and the department.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson. Senator Board of Commissioners, have any comments or questions for Mr. Woodson?
I do. Mrs. Woodson, I just heard your report and you mentioned that you have old kids that are in care. Do you see a trend now with more cases being reported due to children being at home more due to the coronavirus and because schools are out or is unrelated?
I wouldn't call it a trend, but there's not been a downwind trend. We started to understand it might be a slide. So I understand a lot of county government community reports, but we've studied about the sun and we might get a little bit about it.
Okay.
That's how the children that came in Cassidy last week, did you repair them with the coaching machines? My friend.
Okay.
Mr. Woodson, I have a question about the correction action plan that we've been on the last few years and the dollar amount. What was the dollar amount that we had to pay back this year?
This year?
Correct.
It is $32,000.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time understanding.
Payback is $32,016.31. Last year it was roughly $65,000, I may have certainly forgotten. And I'd like to share, the family of the government is studying with about $30 million in Medicaid expenditure for citizens in rural counties.
All right. These correction actions, are they repeat actions or issues or?
On this current county single audit, it was several states. It wasn't a, it was several states, maybe one worker, maybe three workers, I'm not sure. The food stamp workers were notified. I think NC fast just got a few flaws. I will badmouth it as bad as some of the directors do, but just got a few flaws. And I hold it that out to the state of this. Why notify food stamp workers if there's a change in some of the social security benefits? And the department was notified, so those two food stamp workers should have notified the Medicaid department. There's no record of them doing that. I'm not saying they didn't do that. They were my phone. But there's no record of them, so it was a simple error.
Yeah, it's just my concern is that over the course of, since I've been on board, that we've had, we've been on corrective actions and each year the county has to pay back these monies. And though I'm glad that it's not $65,000, that was it, $65,000 and it's $30,000 this year, but when we get down to the point that we're zero of paying back and especially when it's spinning on the axle of the wheels of the same repeated corrective actions that I'll be really correcting those actions to get down to zero, you know? That's a major concern. Is your staff, are they actively trying to understand what resources or I guess services they are supposed to be giving out so we don't have these each time?
I've had a lot of turnover in that department. I continue to have a lot of turnover in that department, but those are difficult programs. You have to look at each individual, the amount of finances that they have, when that money was spent down. It's a very complicated program. They're not giving us on the same things. Like I said, this year they got us on two social security cases. In the past, it's been more of a long-term care cases. So I think we're doing a lot better with a long-term care than they got us on these two social security cases. So I said, I have a lot of turnover. We've done contracted training. I had a lady come in about two years ago and did extensive training with six workers. Rapped out about three of those workers left and two weeks, I'm just gonna have two of those workers left.
Right. Well, I'm not trying to beat up you too bad because you just.
I'm handling concerns.
You just got back, but I do recall the conversation that we had in times back, I think that you had, you did have a lot of turnover at one point in time and I think you did some corrective actions then, but concerns me another $30,000 here with another correction action plan. Are we on the right road of getting down to zero? I would just love for you to come up here and tell us, hey, look, we don't owe anybody any money. We're good to go, we're solid and we're proficient and we're moving forward. That's where I'm looking at. The $30,000 is still a lot longer.
I understand, sir. I agree with you. At least we had one audit since then.
We did, when?
We had one audit since then.
Well, okay. If you're right, let's bring both of them to light and correct. But that really does concern me and I just hope that the next time that we hear from you is that we've got it down to zero.
Like I said, Mr. Chairman, I understand the concern and I agree with it. I'm not willing, I'm not comfortable committing that right now. Our next single county audit's already started and I can't pay you up here and get it to be zero next year. I'd be doing good disservice if I did that.
Where is the last question I didn't want? Where are we gonna get the $30,000? Where's that gonna come from?
We took out, actually we've budgeted out the salary.
Last year's budget's that much?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Woodson.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right. Next, ladies and gentlemen, we want to have Ms. Charlotte Duncan with Economic Development. She's been pretty busy back and forth, so we'll give her a break.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. Good evening. So it's, since August 3rd when you appointed me interim director of economic development and then a little prior to that in preparation for Mr. Woodhouse's transition out, we've been pretty busy. I'd like to thank Paula for helping me with some administrative support and it's been another great opportunity for Vincent and I to work together on things outside of our visions with my senior assistant job. So thanks to multiple folks in the offices as well for helping support me as we make this transition. So currently, how am I managing the EDC office operations? I am not in this ability all the time. We have signs on the door and our voicemail, we said that economic development is by appointment only or over the phone. This is something that we should have in place anyway just with COVID-19 precautions, but it also helps us manage and then stay focused and maximize efficiency in our tasks as well. So so far that's been working out fine. I come over here every day, I just may not be over here every day. So the office is staffed at some level. Next week, I will be sharing a worker with Cooperative Extension from a workforce development program at Durham. It is a local student here in the community who's going to do some workforce training with us through economic development and cooperative extension. So she'll be in this office 10 hours a week. We're also voting on our website and Facebook as resources and using them more as toolboxes for communication. So if I'm speaking with a small business over the phone who needs a form or different resources, I can also drive them to our website and to Facebook as well. So that's helping with some of that outreach efforts. And then you have links to the new EDC website, the tourism website and Facebook for both of those areas so that you can check out what we've been doing there as well. As far as new and existing industries go, in the last few weeks, we've been able to do two site visits with Heritage Mulch. This is a company out in the Manson community that previously worked with potentially about a water run extension. So we've been picking up where that dropped off and rebuilding that relationship and working on the progress of that company and their site expansion, expanding their footprint with that business there in Soul City. Of course, you know the Y's interchange. We broke ground this past week on the sewer extension there, so that opens that area up for development, which is really exciting. On that EDC website that I mentioned earlier, we now have a feature where local landowners, property owners can list their commercial and industrial sites. And so I just saw on a press release today inviting property owners to contact us. Paula's going to help support me on receiving those inquiries. And so it is free of charge to list your, we pay a little bit as the county, but for landowners, it's free of charge for them to list a commercial or industrial property so that we start getting out some of our available sites to folks across the state and outside of that. I did touch base with the Warren Corrections Institute board, Gordon Hawkins, in the last couple of weeks. It was around a potential broadband piece with accessing their communications tab, but it was nice to make that communication with her. And of course, you know that the Chateau Lake Project, the developer led a Zoom call. This was not a county call, but multiple folks from the county were on that call. And so I attended that as well and I also touched base with that developer to start working on that relationship as well. In terms of business assistance, we've been redoing some of our tourism ads and looking at advertising for the upcoming months, again with our website and social media updates. And I was able to do a really great site visit with a new business down in Lake Gassen right before Lizard Creek. Chairman Davis, in your district, Artist Developments is a new art gallery that recently have been there. I have met, I met last week with Robert Davey, the town administrator in the town of Arlington, to hammer out some of the agreement with Frontier Warren and making sure that we're moving forward on that project as well and how the county is going to continue their involvement with, in regard to the conference room space that you'll have asked for and how we might help manage that space and then also bring in some of the entrepreneurial outreach efforts that I should be working with via the, by what the EDC bylaws, you know, just starting to build out that relationship with Frontier Warren and Robert Davey. I did meet last Friday with the economic developers in the region, the Carter-Cogg region, and we talked about ways that we would like to see them utilize some of their CARES Act funding. I neglected to put the numbers in front of me, but they received quite a bit of money from the CARES Act to go into our region. A little over a million dollars is going to go into their 0% interest revolving loan fund, so they're gonna hire a new staff person and they'll have more funds there available for, for the counties in that region. And so more information to come on that. They're taking the lead on getting that stuff out, but we'll make sure that our businesses get that information. And we're also talking about other ways to work on data collection through using some of that CARES Act funding as a region and then also how counties are going to fit on their own. We have moved forward in our strategy of planning efforts with working with the Governor's Hometown Strong team in preparation for their action team to meet with us. And I have been in conversation with multiple agencies about rebooting our Brownfields Assessment Grant. Previously, this department had submitted an assessments grant to look at a couple of sites in our opportunity zone and we missed the mark on that great application by just a few points, so we're working with the consultant to approve our application and resubmit and hopefully get it this time. I have been able to touch base with multiple folks at Commerce as well as EVP and C to speak to specific projects around their building reuse grant as well as the intuitive fund grant and CVBG, but also just to make those relationships and learn more about those funding sources so that we can offer that information to businesses moving forward. As far as workforce development goes, the ice house trainings did start a couple of weeks ago, the third week mark that the town of Arlington, through the Frontier Warren space and the county, though, I must admit I haven't been as involved up to this point with NCID of funding those entrepreneurial mindset trainings. And I think we have about 20, 17 to 20 people in that cohort, so that's been a successful outreach event. And then touched base with Dave Blodgett, Lake Gassen Outfitters, about some previous conversations he'd been having with this department about the potential for bright trails and just a good conversation with him about how his business is doing in light of COVID-19 and tourism in the county. And that's it. Unless you have any questions for me, I'm happy to entertain them.
Wow, you've been really busy.
Thank you, we have you.
Any questions for Ms. Duncan? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the board of our, we're going to item number four, which is the update on pending zoning ordinance amendment and review process for Lake Gassen Hotel Project and this is Mr. Ken Krulik, planning the zoning administration. And while he's coming, come on in, Mr. Krulik. I want to speak to something real quick and as chairman, I feel, I feel this in due process that I do speak to this because we have had an influx of emails regarding this project. First of all, as your county commissioner, I represent the district where this project is potentially trying to gain ground, but there is some misinformation out there that I just feel at this point in time that we should speak to because it speaks to the integrity of this, of these board of commissioners. And as chairman, it is my duty to ensure that the integrity of this board stays intact and influx of emails speak to a difference of opinion when it comes to how these board of commissioners operate. There is no conflict of interest between these board of commissioners and that lake project. It has been said that we were taking a vote, that we were gonna move, ladies and gentlemen, if you could hear me on Facebook, those here present, board of commissioners have a process. We have a procedure and we have a law and that is how we operate. We do not intend to or try to engage in any underhandedness. There's no backdoor deals. There's no under the table money that's given to a commissioner to support or not support a particular project. These board of commissioners, we operate on the utmost integrity. And as chairman of this board, as well as I am chairman of this board, I'm going to ensure that that integrity stays intact. If you have a question about the process, about the procedure, about the law, we have our county manager, Mr. Jones, be more than glad to share that with you. We have our county attorney, be more than glad to share it with you. Any of you board of commissioners, we're glad to share it with you. We will abide by the procedure, the policy that we have in place and definitely the law when it comes to this project. I think that speaking to I think that speaking to the integrity of these commissioners, that we work tirelessly and hard to ensure that we do what's best for the citizens of Warren County. And that's exactly what we will do. Part of the procedure tonight was to hear from Mr. Ken Krulik. He comes before us and he gives us update on things that he's got going on. So happy this is one of the things that has to come up. There is no vote tonight. There was no intention to be a vote tonight. And I assure you, as chairman of this board, and I'll leave it at this, I will meet you at each and every turn with fact and truth when it comes to what we do in the county. Not just speaking about the lake project, but just speaking about how we proceed as a board and as a county when it comes to county government business. I will meet you at every turn with the fact and the truth. If you have any questions about that, feel free to call me directly. I have no problem with that. But the integrity of this board has been challenged and I do not appreciate it. Mr. Krulik, be at the floor.
Thank you, sir. Can everyone hear you okay? All right, so yes, thank you for those comments. And absolutely, tonight is just really inspirational. So before you is a potential amendment to the zoning ordinance that was actually reviewed back in March. So everyone noticed around March, that's when things kicked in with COVID and messed everything up in terms of a lot of the meetings for a lot of the units of government.
Mr. Krulik, I hate to interrupt you, but we are having a very hard time understanding you. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. It's much better.
All right.
Is that better? So again, back in March, March 3rd of the exact, the planning board had met with the potential, with this potential project for the lake as well as these potential amendments that are before you right now to take a look at the material that was presented at the time for this board to consider for these amendments. So in your packets, you would receive what was reviewed and actually recommended from the planning board to amend the ordinance with regards to these height determinations. And this actually goes back even before the Chateau Lake Project even came to bid. County-wide zoning went to play back in January of 2019, not long after the former EDC director Stacy Woodhouse and I had some conversations on the interchanges, which now had zoning to potentially look at promoting them for development with hotels. And one of the things that came up was actually amending our height restrictions that we have in the ordinance. So these conversations have gone back for some time. So the planning board reviewed these potential amendments. And the appeal for the amendments are on the commercial districts, the lakeside business, neighborhood business, to up those from forty feet to sixty feet. On the heavy business, light industrial and heavy industrial districts to 100 feet. And then within the proposed, where the time is proposed for the PUD CR or mixed use designation for combining commercial or residential and various other uses on the same property within that particular district. On the very last page, number five, talking about commercial uses, that the building height may be increased up to a maximum, up to a max of 100 feet for related commercial uses as part of that project. So that's not going to be across the board. That's just for any applied project that is a PUD CR. So those particular amendments in the board, so the process, as you talked about earlier, is for this board to receive an agenda item request from me as the county planner at your September meeting. And then should you choose to do so, you would then study a public hearing after a subsequent meeting in October to take these amendments into consideration, hear public comment, and then vote. Any questions on the amendments?
Yes, can you state that, it's just a tad, but I want to make sure that the process that you just spoke about is very clear. If you repeat the process, the very last comment.
Certainly. The process, not just for this amendment, but any ordinance amendment that would go before this particular board to vote and take action is as follows. The recommendation to have the planning board first review it for the potential changes, and that was done back in March. The next step that then made for that board, the planning board, they make a recommendation approval to recommend it to the board of commissioners to take action. So that step then is for me to submit an agenda and request item, action request. You would then receive it at that subsequent meeting. At that meeting, you would then set the public hearing for the following meeting. So as an example for this one, again, these amendments were reviewed and had recommended back in March. Everything's been hanging fire for a few months. So now, I would then submit this action request item for your September meeting, which will be September 14th, I believe. At that time, you would then set the public hearing for your subsequent meeting. That would be the legal process we follow.
Thank you, Mr. Krulik. Are any board of commissioners having any questions for Mr. Krulik or comments pertaining to this process? Or this agenda?
And subs just to add a little bit more on this in terms of an out of relation for the actual Chateau project, which has been submitted and is going to be going to public hearing for the Board of Adjustment September 2nd. So that meeting has been set. And just to make sure we understand is that there's two elements to this project that's going to be reviewed by the Board of Adjustment. The process, the protocols will be very similar to this, a combination of Zoom and in-person meetings following the same protocols and guidelines here with commissioners. The developer would have to provide evidence supporting his applications. Those who are either for the project or against it would have to present evidence supporting their claims either way. That's that process for two specific items. One is the conditional use permit for the actual PUD CR that's applied for by the developer, which again is combining commercial, residential, medical, hotel, conference center, all the 44-ha site where there is a South Shore Realty right now beneath this Ferry Bridge. The second application they put in is for the variance. The variance they're applying for is for what's called the impermeable surface coverage on that property. And what that means is that only a certain amount of land can be covered by structures, asphalt, concrete. If it's a residential area, it's 25%. If it's a commercial or should say a non-residential area, which is anything commercial, that's 36%. The variance that's being requested by the developer is for up to, does not mean it's going to be down this way, but up to possibly 60%, and that's the variance request they are seeking. So those two applications are before the Board of Adjustment to hear testimony on for September 2nd. The conditional use permit for the PUD CR and the impermeable surface cover requirement and variance on that designation. Any questions?
You know what? Mr. Krulik, thank you. Well said.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, I was going to hit the road for a long commute home unless there's anything else you need from me.
You got to ask Mr. Jones, I'm done.
Sir, would you be able to?
Unless the board has additional questions, we appreciate it. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
One quick question. Have you given this presentation on the local radio?
I'm sorry, on the board before?
The local radio station. Have you done it?
I have not given this presentation on the radio. I did participate on the Zoom call. I was a listener on the Zoom call the developer put out a couple of weeks ago. But I have not given this presentation on the radio. It is on the website. The information we have available is on the website and also my department.
I want to give a spark though. I think what he shared tonight is good. I'm not so sure if the people at home could hear you. And I don't know if the problem might, but we could schedule that if they have the time and if you're willing to do it.
Excellent.
Might be something to consider. Just a consideration.
Sure, sure. It's a good idea. Thank you for that. We'll definitely see if we can work out.
Certainly. Anything else? Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the board, I'm trying to go over to item number five, which is the draft, this may be a 21 strategic man review offered by our county manager, Mr. Vincent Jones. Be at the floor, sir.
Sure, thank you, Chair. I really just wanted to bring back before you the draft, goals, and objectives. You all spent a full day and some time prior to that working on in February. And I don't think any of us expected that we would have the next few months impacted by COVID. And so we're trying to get back to doing business as broad and safely as possible. And one of the things that we had not brought back to your attention was the draft of our goals and objectives. And so we wanted to bring this to your attention, see if you had any questions about it, get your feedback. Some of the dates, we would like to go ahead and update those dates on them and bring them back to you so you can formally take some action on them and approve them and accept if you're comfortable with that. Time review, if you'd like, is what? They said they did. So we will get an update to you and have that before you accept it. Thank you.
You got to be kidding me. That's it? You're done? I'm teasing. All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Appreciate that. Looking forward to hearing from you. Okay, last meeting, we had, during our business meeting, we had some appointments that we didn't get to. And to my understanding, we're going to have to table item 6A for some potential issues that our county attorney is looking into. He's going to get back with us. So ladies and gentlemen, the board, if you don't mind, I'm just going to table that one. And we're going to move on to 6B, which is horse cheek to the courthouse where we're in committee representing District 5, which is Mr. Powell's district. So I would entertain a motion that we approve item 6B as stated.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item 6B as stated.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Powell, excuse me. It's been properly motioned by Vice Chair Hunt that we approve, second by Commissioner Pierce, that we approve item 6B as stated. Is any discussion here none? All fingers aye? Close name, motion is carried. Ladies and gentlemen, that is the end of our work session agenda. Still fast because we have some other issues thrown in with the technology. We're going to work it out. I think we're going to hear from them September the 14th. Is that correct?
Right, we will try to get them rescheduled for your September meeting. And then actually, one of the presentations, actually, I'll have to give us a video that we can put up ahead of time. And so just so we can get the information out. And so we will try to take them up and we'll try to have it ready for your September 14th meeting. And again, we apologize for the inconvenience. We thought we were ready to roll, so sometimes that happens. So we'll try to make sure we're ready the next time.
No problems, John. We appreciate it. I just ask that of those who are joining us through Facebook, we're going to talk about broad hand and economic development, adjustment assistance, which is two key things that looks to and speak to the growth of Warren County. So I ask that you join us again on September 14th to hear these presentations. They are great presenters and professionals in what they do and they're really aiding Warren County's growth. So with that said, ladies and gentlemen, I entertain a motion that we adjourn our work session meeting.
Motion, okay. I move that we adjourn our work session meeting.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Pierce, second by Commissioner Hunt, that we adjourn our work session meeting. Is there any discussion here none? All fingers aye?
Aye.
It's nay, we hereby adjourn. Thank you for coming out.